We call this meeting of the Roxbury Board of Finance, regular meeting Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the special meeting minutes from June twenty-second of twenty twenty-two. Does everybody had a chance to?
I'll take a pass because I wasn't at the meeting.
I'm fine with it.
Julie, Julie?
Yes.
Was one place where you had, this is small, Paul and Holly seconding.
Yes.
Paul made a motion and then you have Paul and Holly seconding.
Oh, I'm looking at it right now. I can see it right there. Yes, that would be Holly. I'm going to correct that. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Anything else? Holly, you okay?
I am.
We have a motion approved.
I moved.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, one abstention. Next thing on the agenda is the first selectmen report.
Excellent. Well, we are in a new fiscal year and we haven't met in a while, so I guess now was the time to put together all that we had talked about for the year, so that is underway. For bridges that we have going on currently, we have Bosworth, Bosford being rebuilt. The north side of the bridge is done. They're going to be cutting up the road later this week or the beginning of next week. And they start breaking apart the other side and they're going to, so far, so good. Everything is very fixable and that's great to hear. This is one of those ones that we're saving a tremendous amount of money. This, this bid came in at thirty thousand. We're just under thirty thousand, about twenty-nine thousand, I believe it was, twenty-five. So that's a huge win for the town. Davenport is still under construction. There were huge delays over the summer. It started with steel rebar and everything.
Supply chain issues?
Supply chain issues. And then everything is formed and poured in place, so they use a, like a rubberized form liner that gives it that stone look. And that was on back order for a very long time. So now that's in place and now they're working at it. Our current date, you know, with no additional charges at this point, there's no additional fees. We're looking at October twenty-second, which is, you know, a good two months behind where we had originally proposed. A little bit frustrating, not only for, you know, for me, but Public Works and the, and the residents on that road, so hopefully that'll get wrapped up. The great news is Squire Road is done. It, we got it done in a little over a week, two six-foot ends, all tapered. The concrete was bored. All the fill was done. Really, just, I can't say enough about the talent of our Public Works guys. They just killed it. Right now, we're looking at under a hundred and fifty thousand for this bridge. And I go, if you guys remember, this was originally quoted at over eight hundred thousand. That we started to budget for. Remember this conversation like a year and a half ago. Also, Public Works, that was kind of one of my pet projects and that is absolutely underway. They started the sheet rock about two weeks ago. All new five-eighths sheet rock was put in, taped, painted. All the walls have been painted. Right now, we're putting up new shelving around the sides to start to organize what's there. And then tomorrow, we're renting a man lift. We had gotten some prices because I wanted to do the LED conversion for all the lights. Prices started coming in, in the, you know, high teens, low twenties. Again, it was just an opportunity to see if we could save some money and do some stuff ourselves, so went out and bought a whole bunch of high-intensity LED lighting. Twenty-four of a fixture that's over two hundred watts for the shop to replace the old two fluorescents, so with twenty-four lights at twenty-eight thousand lumens. Plus linear lights that go around the workbench, some flat panels for the offices. So we're gonna, we're gonna do that for more like four thousand dollars and we're gonna get that done.
Nice.
And this is literally the talent of the people of Public Works. So Mike Foreman, you know, Paul Swanson, Todd, everybody's really getting involved and they're getting kind of excited about that. The next thing that we also ordered is the lower garage door panels and the weather stripping, so we're adding another layer of windows to the garage doors. Replacing the rusting panels on the bottom, putting new bottom astricles, weather stripping all around the sides to try and tighten up that building a little bit. And then as we get the store rooms cleaned, we can redo what was like the old locker room, store room and the office. And I don't know if you guys have paid attention to the news very much, but last week Governor Lamont announced thirty-one point three million dollars in state grants to seventy-seven small towns in Connecticut. I had put one in for two hundred thousand dollars for Squire Road. We got accepted.
And it's already done.
Squire Road is not only done, it's also paid for.
That's great.
I also put in, if you guys could remember, back on the budget line, I, I was trying to get the paving done and we had no money for it. We had five thousand, forty thousand dollars that we had already had in the budget for it as a capital improvement. But we'd be looking at closer to two hundred thousand if we were going to do the town hall in Public Works. So awarded from the state a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for town hall, Public Works paving, forty thousand dollar matched funds. Now our forty thousand dollars is enough to pave new, the whole place.
Fabulous.
Wow.
Additionally, Public Works building improvement. We were awarded eighty thousand with a twenty thousand dollar match. Public Works is paid for.
Wow.
Take a bow.
Take a bow. Hey, my first time writing grants and we got a half a million dollars.
How much does that add up? How much does that add up to, Patrick?
What was that?
What does that add up to?
It's a total of the five hundred thousand dollars with twenty percent match fund, so it's as much as that we could apply for. Looking at the other towns, I don't know why they didn't jump on this as it was.
Yeah.
It was my first time writing grants. I wasn't even sure if I was doing it right, but I figured I'd give it a shot. There is a lot involved with it. But congratulations to us and the town because everything had to be shovel-ready. So all these projects that are underway right now, we can get them done. So I have to get into a little bit more of how we're gonna, you know, fund this. Additionally, at future meetings, we're probably gonna have to move some ARPA funds around because it was those ARPA funds that are in that category of bridge and culvert that was paying for Squire. Now we're gonna need to put that towards our future projects. So just like the success of Bosford, we have some other granite stone bridges that if we repair them and fix them now and repoint them, break down the parts that are broken and repair them, we can last another twenty years or more on these bridges that are still with Roxbury Granite. So I, basically, it's now a new list. The culverts on Bacon Road have to be addressed, so we have plenty of other projects and now we're really just fast forward to getting, you know, more of a five-year plan. So next year is going to be an exciting time as well. Again, Squire Bridge is, culvert is probably the biggest one that was on the slate in general. We've just done it. So now none of these other culverts really scare us at all. It's gonna be a very successful year next year. And thank you to State of Connecticut for providing us this opportunity. So it's huge.
So Patrick, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Like Squire Road, you say it's done. It was less than two hundred thousand. Is there any issue about getting the funds and after certified that you're using or anything like that?
There's all sorts and that's where Kim and I have to meet because all of these things, there has to be all, so we already, like whenever we do this. And, and just like when we did paint, I know this was before you, but when we did the Pater Hill Culver, you know, we're allocating for, like just for Squire Road, we used four hundred gallons of gas on all those machines. So there's additional cost, the process, the topsoil, the, you know, the paving itself. We still have to put up the guardrails and right now my prices are coming in at like twenty-four thousand because we wanted to put nice wood rail. So we're far from done. The culverts in and the road is rebuilt and the intersection has been changed as we talked about. But now there is still a couple.
The costs will creep up because, you know, we're going to be able to apply all the time of Public Works, all their benefit time, just all of those. Plus, you really don't think about equipment time. We did, we did some rental, but all the equipment time for all the trucks that were used.
We rented two massive excavators. We had a six-inch trash pump that was amazing. I.
So when you add all that up, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna creep up to close to two hundred thousand maybe, but, but not, not nearly what we thought it was going to be.
It's, never would have thought of allocating those payroll and all that time.
Oh, yeah. Well, I do that all the time.
That's, that's what it is, even with, with the, with the sixty-four thousand.
So, you know, so all their benefit time, everything.
So has it improved morale for those, those people?
I think so. I still start my day every morning and we're getting a lot done. I think probably not last week because we had a lot to get done. And I think between Public Works being ripped apart and sheet rock and tools everywhere, they had to paint the walls, the ceiling. I mean, it's a little bit ambitious to do all of those projects at work at once. But at the end of the day, I think we all felt satisfied that we had gotten the bridge done, Public Works is getting done and, and all this stuff is happening. I don't, you know, they, I think they appreciate the attention and what we're doing.
Did they get pizza this time?
Of course, of course, Brian. So we had a pizza party Friday and actually we had some of the guys from Sheet Rock just finishing up as well. So once we have all the lighting up and I, and all the shelving and things back in order and we can work on the storeroom and the office, I'm gonna take you all for a tour back down there to show, show you what we're doing.
Great.
Now it's gonna give us a chance to go a little bit farther, to start to work on that pole barn, to get electricity out there, then to start closing up the doors. And that's gonna be our next thing. And with the bridge side also, let's not forget, because I don't want to be just all happy tales. We're still looking at Minor Bridge Culver, which is twenty-six feet in the ground and, you know, that's gonna be in the vicinity of a two million dollar bridge when it happens. The reason why I'm a little bit on hold for that is just like, and I don't know if we had actually talked about this at our last Board of Selectmen meeting. But Weller's Bridge, which we're looking at in year twenty-five or twenty-six, that's a hundred percent paid for by the federal infrastructure dollars, which is huge. Also, we're partnering with the state for their design fees and engineering. So literally, it will cost zero dollars for the town of Roxbury to fully replace Weller's Bridge.
That's great.
So I don't know if that was announced last time. The thing is, there's state infrastructure dollars as well as this trickles down. It's always been, much like the Davenport Bridge where we get a fifty percent buy-in, our local bridge program. They're talking about moving it. They've mentioned on one of the Governor Lamont calls that they were looking at more of an eighty-twenty split with a two million dollar culvert. That would be great. So if, I'm kind of waiting to see what happens with that. You know, I'm glad we held off on Weller's Bridge and we didn't commit. Because we just, we saved a lot of money there and I'd like to do the same thing with Minor Bridge. There's nothing that's critical at this point. So we, we're still good. There's no, you know, failure at this point.
Yeah, there's, there's just a question about, with federal money, you always have to, to have.
Correct.
It's a, it's a reimbursable grant usually, but, but there's some question about this infrastructure. This, this particular infrastructure money coming from the federal government, because it is a hundred percent reimbursable. But, but we're gonna have to have at least half of it put aside. And that's kind of what I'm asking about with this sub-account for cash flow reasons. We are gonna have to budget, probably budget some money, but we're still waiting to get answers.
Correct.
Through the DOT about, is the federal government, are they gonna make us?
This is a perfect tie-in for topic C.
Right.
Well, we'll get it because that's exactly what this is.
You know, the other thing I did want to point out that, that the steep grants are just under five hundred thousand. It's four hundred.
Yeah, it's because there's a buy-in, there's twenty percent.
Thousand buy-in by the town, so total projects of five hundred, I think fifty thousand. A hundred and ten of the towns match and four hundred forty thousand from the steep grant.
All of them required a twenty percent buy-in by the town, if I didn't make that clear. So.
Did we do a lot of work on Minor Bridge a couple of years ago? Is this different?
So they redid the road. Yeah, they closed it down for a while and they rebuilt the road, repaved it. They never addressed the culvert in the ground that was installed in nineteen forty-one.
Okay.
It's a steel, steel arch culvert on concrete frames. This, because it's so deep in the ground, is an extensive project. Whenever they do these bridge products, projects, every six feet you go down, you have to step it. So in order to go twenty-six feet down in the ground plus your footing depth, you're looking at a very, very large cut.
Could be a hundred yards, who knows?
It's, it's gonna be a lot. It's gonna be a lot. So that's, that's why we're looking at that big number and, and unfortunately, that is not a public workshop. And that is.
No, no.
Hired professionals. So that's the only other, you know, Weller, Weller's Bridge is taken care of and then Minor Bridge. Mostly the others are in great shape and we are continuing with Cardinal to finish up our bridge survey. So they're back, they're back at it. They haven't started it yet. We're expecting that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yep.
Is it basically just amending what they provided to us?
No, it's finishing the list. They started the list and they never finished it. So now, in order to, to get a good, you know, scope of what's ahead of us. You know, we had agreed last year that it was the best thing to do to continue some of these, these surveys so that we'd see where our problems are.
I've seen a lot of work happen over the summer on various roads all over town where asphalt was put in near drains so that they would be more efficient.
Exactly. We're, we try to address those as we possibly can. We hit some chip sealing. We didn't do any massive paving this year because, you know, the oil costs were just through the roof. So, you know, we kind of held off. So next year we'll probably hit different projects at that point, but that, I will keep you posted. I'll keep you posted. We still have Truck Eight being rehabbed that will be ready for winter time. And our replacement for Truck Five was ordered back in March, I think. We do have a VIN number, so it is into production. We're probably gonna see that before winter as well. And then all, thank you, by the way, Kim and, and everything with the ARPA execution. All the checks have been distributed.
Yeah, pretty much.
Benefactors have, have pretty much got what they need.
Almost all.
And Senior Center is going through with theirs broadband upgrade and all their IT upgrade. And we've kind of, Jimmy's and myself have kind of been, you know, working with Jennifer to kind of help her with this, this plan because they're doing a couple. It's kind of part of a bigger project that they're working on. And also, a, a, a lot of the IT that we're getting is gonna be from Cuginio, a local place in Roxbury. And I, I'm gonna announce it, but only for this, this board. We actually have EarthLink satellite now at the park.
Starlink.
Starlink.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Darrell from Cuginio donated it to the town, so now we have Starlink at the park. So we have Wi-Fi, satellite Wi-Fi at the park. There's so many people in this town that do so much to help out and it's, you know, I, I, right now you can go use it if you needed to. We don't have any restrictions on it at the moment, but we will and we'll have separate things. And now you can host a meeting down there or have whatever, which you've never been able to do. You've never got any kind of satellite or anything, so, so it's great. And then the purchase on North Street is still going through, which is contracts going back and forth. We will go to a town meeting.
You talking about?
Yeah, the two acres basically across the street. That's still, still being worked on and it's basically was just in the hands of the attorneys for a while. And we're kind of, once we get the finalized contract and we're good to go, we're just gonna be waiting on a title search at this point to make sure we're free and clear. And then we go to a town meeting to get that approved.
Is there a structure on that property, on the two acres?
No, no, it's completely clean, flat, level. It's gonna be something else to mow for a little while. But it, it was more the opportunity and when it hit, it's pretty close to town, the center of town and you don't have much land left. It's not accounted for, so.
Patrick, have you agreed on a price yet?
We have agreed on a price. If you remember, the town allowed it to go up to the assessed value of one seventy-seven. We're at one fifty.
Wow.
The appraisal came in at two fifty, around two fifty. So it's still a great deal. Yeah.
Who do you buy it from?
So we're actually buying it from the daughter of Craig's, of Craig Chuck's, which is the father Chuck or Craig.
Chuck's.
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 His father.
Was the father, so he passed away. This is his daughter. And it was Chuck's wishes that this stay with the town. So this is kind of fulfilling his wishes. This conversation started when he was still around and then we were dealing with the two siblings, Craig and Anne. But then after, you know, he passed away, it kind of changed hands. So that delayed the process a little bit because the trustee, you know, ownership moved around a little bit. But it looks like we're all set to go.
As though, as the ambulance, excuse me, has the ambulance expressed any interests or are they still?
Nobody's talked about anything, you know, we wanted to, you know, because we didn't want to use it for anything specific and just leave it open. We're just gonna leave it open at this point. And if we have the right ability or the right need or somebody comes to us, we have this on our table.
That's great. How are you thinking about financing?
It's not gonna be financed.
I mean, well, not, not through the, what's that called?
This is gonna be the undesignated fund balance is where it's gonna come from.
I'm drawing a blank. What we got?
Land acquisition.
Land acquisition.
Yeah, we're not using that.
So that ties our hands on one.
Correct. So then you can only have it for open space recreation or, you know, some limited limitations to, we didn't want to do and, you know, if, if, if another property comes up that the town feels is a critical piece, we still have that fund available. So it's not gonna take anything away from that. So this is a little bit of kind of extra money that we basically have to, you know.
Land acquisition is what, over eight hundred thousand?
Oh, go ahead, Bruce.
I was gonna ask about infrastructure and these projects sound great and they're, they're all staged. Do we have any deferred, big deferred maintenance issues that have to be fixed?
I think most of them we're kind of addressing. I think the biggest thing coming into this office was that, you know, the bridges and culverts were our big expense and, and, you know, talking to a lot of my peers in other towns, that is what it is. And, you know, I, I'd like to see some more roadwork in the future, but it's not something that's a, a critical problem right now.
It's not things that should have been done that haven't been done. There are things.
You know what? I, I think we kind of addressed a lot of those in last year's budget, you know, with Public Works and, and with Town Hall and some of the things that we were looking at. Over the years too, like the kitchen, for instance, was approved, what, two years ago? And we just never kind of took action on it. So, you know, there was seventy or eighty thousand that was put into that account originally for that. It was like twenty-six for this kitchen. We still have the bathrooms to do. So although we're doing all this work, that money was allocated previously. So the Board of Finance has always looked to what's the next project, what's the next project? And those questions are gonna come up really in the budget cycle of, have we looked at everything? And that's a great, I think we all talk about that every year.
The new kitchen?
We're getting, we're getting there.
It's really great. It's really good. No, I just.
So there was a designer.
Any liabilities, just trying to ask.
No, I, I think what he's working on now at that specifically down the Public Works garage is, you know, that's probably one of the last.
Yeah, yeah. And now the paving part of it and paving around Town Hall, you know, I wish we could have done it. I was a little jealous when the fire department came in and I'm like, oh, I can't, we do it. Now we have the opportunity. So it's pretty exciting.
We do it this year or next year?
It's probably gonna be too late this year. Yeah.
So the biggest I'm seeing is probably that Minor Bridge.
That's why I want to, you know, be very transparent with it, that that's gonna be something we're gonna have to put money towards. That's something that we can't accomplish ourselves, but.
Under the eighty-twenty.
Right.
Well, right now it's fifty. Right now it's fifty. Yeah. But every, go ahead.
Patrick, did we budget the hundred and fifty? Do we budget some money for the new property?
No. This is gonna be a straight purchase from the town.
So you'll have to go to a town meeting in that for additional appropriation.
And it'll come, and then it'll come out of the fund balance.
Of fund balance, right.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions that you guys have for me? I wanted to just kind of give a, a brief overview, especially of, you know, what we're doing with the budget that was created and I'm having a blast. So thank you.
We can tell.
It's nice to walk away and said, say we did this or we made a difference on a daily basis. So I definitely enjoy that. And anytime you guys want to take a look or have any questions on anything, I'm completely open.
Have we ever had a little gathering barbecue, whatever, to celebrate all of the town employees and staff?
Almost every month we do. The last one, well, we had brought the smoker down to the gazebo that, once we installed that, so we did all kinds of things. Yeah. She's here, and we had a party down there and we do different things here. You know, we had a pizza party, another pizza party because we completed another bridge for Public Works on Friday. You know, a lot of those little things that just bring us together. And it, it's important. We have an amazing group here. I think we'll all agree. It's a great place to work. So appreciate each other.
Just want to be sure they're appreciated. We show the appreciation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It was a really nice lunch we had out at the gazebo.
Yeah.
People donating all kinds of stuff. It was fun.
We'll do more of those, I promise.
The baseball field?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It was donated by Kurt Yovan and he helped with the assembly of it, but the guys all put it together. The last thing that I just, I want to paint the columns and, and the base and all, just a little, I'd like to make it a little bit more look like Town Hall, you know, with columns and all. And so that will be done probably in the next month or so.
Great.
All right. Any questions on anything for me? Thank you. All right. Yeah. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. It's been a pleasure. It's easy to brag after the summer.
You've had all this great news to share with us. How can we capitalize the good news and get it out to the community? Is it something we want to do now? Do we do it in a, in a look back?
We've been, we've been working with Danbury News Time, Spectrum, Voices, all those ARPA pictures went out. I actually have somebody calling me back on the steep grant. Sometimes I'll put stuff out there like we had talked about with like the speed bumps and things, different stories. Sometimes they pick up on it, sometimes they don't.
I'll tell you, those speed bumps work because I've gone to New Moford yesterday and today. People really slowed down.
We have another, it's not announced yet, but we do have another public forum.
I don't like it.
They slow down. She said, you really don't have to. It's not that bad.
No, they're, they're not.
I figured that out too.
Yeah.
But a lot of folks driving in front of me have figured that out.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there'll be another, those were temporary. It was a trial. We're gonna get in a, we have another public forum coming up on October fifth is the next forum to kind of get feedback now that they were here, because now we're getting complaints. They make a lot more noise for the people that are living there. So like trucks and landscape trailers as they go over that. And now it's added another dimension. So, you know, as good as a trial period, you know, there's probably gonna just be the bolt holes in the pavement after that, but now we had a chance to kind of see because if they're gonna be permanent, they'll be higher. They're not gonna be that low. Or if we go to a traffic table or something, something other than that, so.
There's winter.
Correct. Then you have to worry about the clouds. So these are, these are gonna be coming up in the beginning of November is what we had stated when we put them in. And then now the other traffic speed signs are up, so at least we're collecting data.
Right.
Which is where it all comes to.
Yeah.
What happened to the signs that when you had to stop and we really mean it?
They've all been stolen. Every single one of them. And I, the one that happened in front of my house, I heard them. They were in a pickup truck and you were hearing this saw and all this noise, all this noise, all this noise. And they were here, ding, run, go, 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 go. And then the truck takes off, I go.
My son loved it so much, he posted it on Instagram.
Oh, yeah. They, yeah. We're not gonna replace them, but they were, they were cool, but they, I think they were kind of a novelty, like people wanted them, so they were stolen quickly.
I told Patrick yesterday that I'm self-reporting because I ran a stop sign, a brand-new stop sign that went in over the summer at the corner of Welton.
Yeah, in Gold Mine. Yep.
Well, thank God you put a stop sign.
No, it's, it's, it was a good idea, but I ran.
No, no.
And that was, that wasn't a sole decision. That was with police department. You know, we honestly talk a couple of times a week. I'll talk with the officers. I talk with Matt. You know, everybody in the town, we talk almost on a daily basis. So, you know, we have these conversations and then we know what issues are and then we'll, we'll address them as we can. But, yeah, it's been, it's been great. And even with some of the tree work, there was a bit of time when Stanley was taken away. Getting on them, we got him back. So Stanley's back doing hazardous tree removal.
Good.
In town, they started on Bacon Road. There were about fifteen trees just on Bacon Road that needed to go. Then they're on to Ruckam Road, Painter Hill, Painter Ridge, Davenport. Davenport, you have a lot, in the lower section, there are a lot of issues of trees on that one section. If you guys don't know, most of the town comes, the power comes. If you guys don't know, most of the town comes, the power comes for the town down Davenport. That's the main truck line to the town. That's where a lot of it comes from. So like, working on those specific areas. Um, it'll help us in the next.
I've noticed a lot of trees have these red plastic ribbons around them. Are those designated?
That's me. Yeah. And that's, that's, so any of the ones, uh, you're seeing with the red around, that's all, most of them are Stanley marked. And those are ever sourced removed. Those are going to be paid for by them.
Well, you can see how close they are to the wires.
Exactly. And, 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 you know, uh, honestly, there, there's some, you know, there's some trees that are, just need to be taken down, that they're the town responsibility. And, uh, it's not a cheap, a cheap production. But, uh, for the most part, if we can offset where we can, then it reduces the obligation to the town. Uh, but there are, there is not a, a street in this town that you can't go down and pick out the ones that are dying, whether they be ash or the maple trees or holes in them. Um, there are a lot of trees and until you stop and look, um, there's a lot of trees.
The ash are all dying, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah.
I got a bunch in my house.
I've got two. Yeah. I've taken six out. I'm going to take.
And there's some pine trees that are going. We've had a couple of trees, uh, in the last month. There's one right in front of Maple Bank and there's one on Squire Road that got hit by lightning. Um, so if you're at Maple Bank and you'll look, there's a huge split. It goes down the whole front of the tree. That's one that the state is taking care of. The one that, uh, was hit at Squire, that's town responsibility. There's no wires around. Uh, so we have to take care of those. So there's, there's situations that come up. But yeah, at least we got them back in town. So they're making progress. It's great.
Wonderful, wonderful. Anything else?
I think that's good for now. It's a lot, there's a lot of like in the business things. I wanted to kind of keep it as to, you know, what we're doing, what we're spending on, you know, what we're spending on. Um, and I want you guys to see the hard work, uh, that you've done. Now it's being put into action and I just, I love it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kim? Would you like to share with us your?
Yeah, so, um.
Want me to hand these out?
If you, if you would mind. So, um, attached to the, um, this memo came with the agenda.
Patrick, would you like one? I have it.
So there was the memo attached to the agenda regarding creating a sub-account for the.
Did you guys get that?
Yeah. The bridge and culvert infrastructure projects. So, so as you've heard previously, we have a lot of, um, a lot of these projects that are going to be coming down the pike in the next, uh, five years or so, at least.
Large projects.
Very large projects. And, and what I'm looking to do is to just, um, segregate the bridge and, uh, in culvert projects into, uh, one sub-account, if you will. I'm going to open up a bank account. Stop. I hate when I watch this up. So that we will be able to segregate all of these, all of the funding, uh, the grant monies and such. And, and the appropriations from the town into this one, uh, this one account. And, and the way it's going to be reflected, um, I, I, I apologize for sending an email like way too late in the day today. I, it's my first day back from being out for, for a week. Um, but I did copy page fifteen of the financials. So if you look at the second column, the fund balance, if you go down to the bottom where the fund balance is for reserve for capital expenditures, all of that money obviously is committed for capital and non-recurring projects. So all I'm looking to do is, um, allocate out, uh, the bridge, anything that's earmarked for bridges or culverts, you know, infrastructure, if you will, um, and have it restricted. So it's, it's all kind of staying in the same place. It's just a reallocation, just breaking out, um, from all the other projects. Uh, the bridge and infrastructure.
So you'd have another, you create another column?
Right. So, so if you look, um, where it says restricted for, we have a number of things that are restricted for different things. There, yeah, there will be another line in there restricted for bridge and infrastructure projects, but it'll still all be part of the capital projects.
Okay. So you'll just move some of that up?
Right. Just moving, just moving it up to being restricted. Um, it's, it's just cleaner for me to segregate all of that money in one fund. It's going to help with cash flow if we need it. Um, and so.
Set up a separate bank account.
A separate bank account?
Yeah, what you said, that I understand.
I am, I am. Um, it, it, to me, it's just going to be cleaner for me to do it that way, just to have, because we're talking about so much money. Typically, I, I wouldn't. We, we already have some infrastructure projects in there, but we're talking about many, um, projects over the next.
It's also because of the, it's the dollar amount. And once that money comes back from that grant, that's all that restricted funds. So it just makes it easier to see that we have that money instead of putting it into a file.
It's really on, on the financials. It's just reallocating it to a restrictive, um, column. It doesn't necessarily need to be a separate bank account, but as treasurer, I'm just thinking it's.
How many separate bank accounts do you maintain?
How many? Um, for the reserve for capital? Oh, just in general? I think I've got maybe fifteen, fifteen to twenty. Most of them are earmarked for the general fund, but, um, a lot of them are, are, are have to be segregated, uh, especially if they're special revenue. But yeah, some of them are investment related. So.
This is something you spoke to Rico about, I believe?
I did, I did. Um, I, I did, um, talk to him and discuss that with him.
That's right. Rico does our accounting.
He's the auditor. And I spoke to, um, the finance director in Washington, Washington. You know, they, they kind of follow this model and it's worked very well for them. They've segregated out all their bridge money and stuff.
I think it probably makes the audit trail a lot easier. Because otherwise you're taking from here and then you gotta say, well, I've got to designate that here. And, you know, it's, I think it would be cleaner.
Right. Um, you don't have to do it, but I, but I definitely would like you.
I'm just trying to understand it.
Yeah.
And with our new reporting system, is all this going to be integrated?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, it'll all be in the computer.
And when, and when does that get installed and?
I am still working on it. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm behind on it, to be honest with you. And I just gotta, uh, we're talking about ClearGov, the budget, the budget book. So, um, I just got an email from a guy today, uh, because I just haven't had the time to work on it. So, um, so I'm kind of be trying, I thought maybe this month I'd be able to catch up with it, but I was foolish to think that with my, with what was going on this month outside of Town Hall for me. So, um.
Well, if you need any help, any of us, I'm sure would be happy to come in.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
The bank account then would reconcile with the line item on your.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So just to give Bruce a little bit of perspective, there's certain funds are under control for finance, some are, or I mean, board finance, some are board of selectmen. Right. But tar, tar, which is Town Aid Road.
Yep.
Is strictly money that we get every year from the state, which could be, it's a lot of money.
It's a special revenue fund. So by statute, we get a, a grant every year. Um, so in order to, to segregate that money, most towns have it segregated out into one fund, one bank account, if you will. Um, so the only revenue going into it is.
But sometimes if we have money left over from tar projects, it goes right back in there, correct?
And we haven't had that in a couple of years, but yes, the technical name of the Town Aid Road Fund is Town Aid Road Fund, including transfers, which a transfer would be from the general fund to the Town Aid Road Fund at the end of the year. Extra.
Recently, we did.
There was extra money, but we've spent a lot of money the last couple of years. There hasn't been.
So, so, so just so you know, so the tar money is at the sole discretion of the board of selectmen. Right? So any of that money goes in there, it's, it's up to their discretion how they want to spend it, which is fine. Let me ask you this, Kim. So in doing this, the way it's set up right now, who has discretion over? I just want to, so everybody knows who has discretion or who has.
So, so the town, so the Town Aid Road Fund, you know, special revenue funds are, can sometimes fall under the auspices of the Board of Finance umbrella. But this is all statute driven. It's further restricted the way we have it set up. So, so the, uh, so the laws say you can only use it for very specific things that pertain to roads. And it's all kind of spilled out in the, in the statutes. So like, for instance, with the, um, with the bridge, uh, the culvert infrastructure and all of that. Most, all of Davenport Road is being funded by the Town Aid Road Fund. However, we're going to get fifty percent back from the state through the local bridge, uh, grant, the federal grant that for Davenport. However, because of the way the statutes are read, are written, I can't put it back in the Town Aid Road Fund where all the money's coming out of. So it's helpful to me to have another, to be able to use it for another project um, by putting it into this, you know, you're putting it into this sub-fund as a, as kind of an undesignedated pot of money.
So who over, who oversees your reserve for capital, non-recurring fund right now? Except for all under the board of selectmen or the board of finance?
Um, it's, it's both. It's both because you all vote the budget.
And then they.
And all of the transfers that are on the capital plan that go from the fund balance into.
So I guess officially it would be Board of Finance because Board of Selectmen bring it to Board of Finance, Board of Finance.
The Board of Finance is the budget-making authority.
Overall, you know, you're, you're the ones that set mill rates and approved that budget finally. As opposed to, you know, we don't, as a board of selectmen, present, we present it to you, you approve it. Yeah. So I would say that it's the Board of Finance.
Right. The Board of Finance is the budget-making authority of the town by statute.
Sure.
So, um, but the Board of Selectmen works with the Board of Finance in formulating the, that's the bulk of the budget. But you all get the budget as it's presented. Um, and.
I just want to. Bruce, and all that, the tar fund is very unique in that it's a, it doesn't have to go to a vote, doesn't have to do anything. It's at the discretion of our.
It's all statute driven. So it doesn't.
Is all, are all these funds included in the town budget? Or they're off-budget?
Not, not in the town budget, but if you read the, if, if you read the financials, there's a little blurb like, uh, that we really don't budget our special revenue funds, if you will. It's really the general fund, what in the tax, the tax levy on the town fund that gets, um, that gets voted on, that you guys are responsible for. But the other funds, no, they really don't, they, they really don't work that way. They don't. They don't have to be budgeted. There's really nothing budgeted in those funds, other than what's in the capital plan in the notes, um, and what's grant-driven.
And if I remember our conversation from a couple of months back, um, we've been talking with Rico. He did not, you did not necessarily have to come to the board to set this up. You were just doing it as a courtesy. Let us know.
Correct. As a, as a treasurer, I'm also, I'm the finance director and I'm the elected treasurer of the town. So, so, um, as Rico would tell you, you're the town's banker. You can do whatever as you see fit. So, so after discussions with him, we decided that maybe this was the best course of action to open up a, a separate bank account, given the amount of money that's going to flow through it, the transactions and all of that. So.
Did we lose Holly?
Yes, we did. Oh.
Okay, so.
Anybody have any more questions for Kim?
Do we need to put this to a vote?
You need a motion.
Are you good in that?
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the memorandum?
Second.
To establish how Trevor was going to word this.
Sub-fund.
Sub-fund.
New sub-funds.
Restricted sub-fund?
Or some restricted fund?
I know, right?
The, there was the, um, Kim, you had a title, um, to the memo. It seemed like the appropriate language.
Yeah, the memo in here, I'll read it. And if anybody wants to tweak it, please let me know. Um, we have a motion to establish a sub-account of the existing reserve for capital and non-recurring fund for which to deposit into funds for the highway slash public works, bridge and culvert infrastructure capital projects, as noted in the capital plan and voted on at a town meeting by the legislative body.
So moved.
And that's good.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Oh, you're welcome.
Terrific.
Oh, you know what? I, uh, one thing I did want to mention, um, unfortunately, it's not on the, the agenda, but it's just to give you an update. Um, the audit for June 30th, 2022 has begun. The library is done. All the field work is done. Um, and the tax office, the field work is done. Um, but there's still some in progress with positive confirmations and such. And so, so I'm the last piece. My office is the last piece of the audit and I'm still waiting for information on OPEB pension and LoSAP, the, the emergency services pension plans. So.
When, when do you think that this, um, group will be able to meet with the accounts?
It's hard to say. Um, November, December.
That's when we did it last year.
Right.
Bruce, that'll be, you'll enjoy that. It can be dry, but.
They do an internal procedures audit too. They give us a letter, an internal control letter?
They do. They do. We, it's a management, a letter that is signed by myself in the first election.
Can you text?
That we, that we take the responsibility as management.
Rico will, will be camping out here, um, days on end, going through every file, every account, asking for receipts or.
Yeah, they come in for a couple of weeks, usually when they do my side.
No, I don't have a time or twenty-something years, right?
Yeah, over twenty years. We've gone out to bid a couple of times and, um, we kind of have gone back to them. People don't bid on, uh, other, other firms. Um, I don't know what it is about Connecticut, but other firms don't necessarily bid.
Don't touch.
Yeah.
Goes back a long way, but my dad in the nineteen fifties was the auditor of the county, they had a county.
Oh, wow.
Does anybody have Holly's phone number that can they text her? Cause I'd like her to be a part. Yeah. Just see if she can, see if she's available to jump back on. Who's going to call her? Okay. Thanks, Patrick. So do we need, um, is there anything else, Kim?
I'm good. I just want to tell you that the audit has started. But they're, they're still operating under a COVID, um, work environment, the, the CPA firm is. So, um, so it, everything just takes a little bit longer still.
Should be on the agenda.
So, um, I know I bring this up from time to time, but are, are we going, is there a possibility we might, on minor bridge, we might have to bond?
Interesting you should bring this up because I was just talking with somebody recently. I think they were, uh, a former board of finance member over in Bridgewater. And when they had some big projects, they just took out a loan. Instead of going through all the, the rigmarole bonding, they just went to the bank and took out a loan, like a ten-year.
Term loan?
Yeah, ten-year, twenty-year loan instead of going through all the hassle bonding, which to me, I thought, what do you think?
You know, I thought we could do it if, if these projects, and, and that's part of what I'm trying to work on right now, is, you know, uh, the, the timing of all these projects and that. And, and I thought, I, I think about six months ago, more than six months ago, that, that we would not have to go out to bond. Doing a slew, slew of millions of dollars in bridge work and, and they have, I got it down to a science as far as cash flow. So. So that's what we're. Um, so that's what we're trying to do here. We're definitely going to have to probably appropriate some more funding to some of these projects. Um, but minor bridge, you know, we already have an established, uh, local bridge grant from minor bridge.
Yeah.
So kind of on.
And it's already been, we're already putting, we've been putting money on your capital expense. So.
Right. We, we have appropriated some money towards minor bridge. I think 110,000, not a lot. Um, but, uh, the local bridge money from minor bridge, you know, it's on, we're on the clock for that because those grants expire.
Right. I was just gonna, the reason I raise it is that if, if there is some chance we're going to have to, um, do bonding, I just want to make sure that I'm more, um, up to speed on it than I feel like I am now. So.
Right. So I, I think you remember back when we, when this came up before, um, I did speak to, uh, a gentleman who, who runs a, it's kind of what he does municipal advisor.
Right, right, right.
And, um, I can, I can forward you that Bruce, because you wouldn't have been in on that, um, because this was a while ago. As far as, um, what the, what the rates were at the time, I'm sure they've changed now, but, but it's been a long time since we bonded for anything at the town. This town hall, I think was bonded when it was built. And I think the, I think it was six and a half percent or.
Yeah. I just need to know something about the, more about the basics of the whole process. So if there's something that you have that you want to send me that I could read, that would be great.
Yeah. And, and he's always, uh, these people are always happy to come in and talk to the board. If you want to talk to him directly, but we can arrange that as well.
So Patrick, I think you were outside when I, I mentioned, um, I was talking to somebody who used to be on board of finance at Bridgewater, I think. Whenever they had a big project, instead of going through all the hassle of bonding, which I understand is pretty.
It's painful.
Arduous. Uh, they would just go to the bank and take a loan. So I thought that was. That I guess depends on what the rate is and if it's beneficial, but I don't see why that would be a problem.
Bank loan, very legal, uh, constraints in doing that. I just wonder how they secure it.
But, yeah.
Yeah. I mean.
Well, I guess it would be like a construction loan where it'd be a tier.
Yeah. And I don't know. It would depend on what kind of.
Yeah.
They're lending to the town, presumably it's still a uh, tax exempt interest, you know, for them, whether it's bonded or not.
Right. Right.
So that should be reflected in the rest.
I would think so. Yeah.
Right. Right. So.
Okay. Holly, are you with us?
I am. Thank you.
Good. Glad you're back. I just put your phone number in my contacts. I didn't have it. Patrick was nice enough to, to go out and call you. So thank, thank you, Patrick.
Patrick, thanks.
Um, anything else, Kim or Patrick, before we go into executive session?
Thank you all.
And now we have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
To discuss the vacant board of finances. And that's, and that's seconded. Thank you. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed. So after discussion of the vacant board of finances, uh, we've decided to ask our first selectman to put out his next email blast. An open invitation for anybody that would, um, like to interview for the position. Um, a one week post to see what we get.
Well, given the library, you might need to go for two or three. Our people are mostly back now. School started again, but.
How many?
We'll try it one.
I'll try one. We'll see.
And they'll see.
And.
Yeah. But we will continue to look ourselves as well.
Yeah. That was also discussed that we will all amongst us, we will, are you going to reach out to your previous applicants?
Not directly.
Not directly.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's best not to. It doesn't mean you couldn't have a call with Chris. But I think the others.
So what, the one thing that we also were discussing too, was having the minority representation on the board. So I don't know how we would word that or.
I don't think we put that in.
We're not going to put it in there. It's going to be something that's going to be our choice. And if there is somebody, we do have, uh, obviously the registrar available here. So we could look up anybody's affiliation if we needed to. So, um, that's probably a good thing to just check. Just want to make sure that we stay in balance.
Yeah.
All right. Anything, anybody else would like to discuss other business? No? Lynette, Holly?
No.
No.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, ladies.
Night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
This was an efficient meeting. Okay. Just saying.